Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, October 7th. To order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for public comment? Anybody who wants to speak for public comment this evening? Going once, going twice. I see some other guests. I'm looking at you, Mac.
Are you talking about for other issues or just right now?
I'm talking about for anything that's on our agenda for which you'd like to make public comment now would be the time.
Yeah, I'll withhold that.
Okay, all right, very good. First Selectmen's Report. I have a number of things to report to you this evening. Pass that to you, Kate. Okay, I'd like to extend a warm welcome and farewell to the girls from Shanghai Number Three Girls' School who have been here since the 27th of September with our students in class and touring around places in the Northeast. Very happy that whatever challenges existed last year that didn't allow the students to exchange have been resolved. I was at their dinner this evening and it sounds like everyone's having a phenomenal experience and our students can't wait to go in April to China. It should be a very interesting year to be in China, for sure, and certainly to take celebration messages from Darien, being that next year will be our 200th birthday. Board of Selectmen found at their seats this evening, just as an FYI, a document called Western Connecticut Council of Governments Regional Service Grant Annual Progress Report. This report can be found on the WestCog website, westcog.org. It will also be posted in our minutes this evening. So Kate, I'll give you a copy of that. And just want to give you some highlights of the work of WestCog that's detailed in this report. WestCog receives state and federal approval for Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, otherwise called a SEDS Plan. We are now a state and federally designated economic development district and there is a wide variety of individuals from the government and private sectors that have come together to develop this economic development strategy. So that's something that's very new for us in terms of regional government work. We are working on a draft regional plan of conservation and development that will be available for public comment in November. WestCog is evaluating opportunities for voluntary regional service sharing and modernization of government functions, including things like licensing, permitting, mass real estate appraisals, and payment processing. Kate is actually involved in giving some feedback to WestCog for this modernization program, so we will see what comes of that that might be a benefit to our town. We're also studying on behalf of interested member towns, public safety consolidations and service sharing. There's four towns that are looking, not including Darien, that are looking to perhaps build a consolidated police department and sharing their dispatch or public service answering point systems. So WestCog is helping facilitate the study and the feasibility of that initiative. We are also aggregating a comprehensive fee inventory, which will help to facilitate comparisons and benchmarking between towns on a wide variety of municipal fees, so I think that'll be interesting to us, Kate. And we have been for some time, and I have to give credit to our Executive Director, Francis Pickering, he's actually quite a brilliant individual, who realized that we have these things called councils of government, COGS now, since 2015. It is not county government, but it's regional planning in a different form. There are places in the United States, like parishes in Louisiana, that are not counties but have the designation and the benefits as if they were a county. It's called county equivalency. And what that allows them to do is to apply for federal funding that's only available to counties or county equivalents. So Francis has spearheaded an initiative to have our nine councils of government statewide be recognized as county equivalents so that we can try and apply for additional federal funding into the state of Connecticut. So that's moving along and I understand that it's at the federal government level right now, so we believe that will be very successful. And then through the southwestern region and the Houston Valley region, metropolitan planning organizations, the transportation planning entities within the council of governments, we continue to assist member municipalities with all transportation programming and engineering support. That's a very broad brush on some of the work of WestCog. It's much more detailed than that. Ed is very engaged, Ed Gentha is very engaged with the work that's happening in WestCog, so I will endeavor to keep you updated on new things as they come to pass. But we do issue newsletters every month and have these quarterly reports on service sharing. Following on that, I understand I was not at our last meeting, but Pam, you had asked about the status of bike route planning, so I have great news on that front. There is a pilot program, a Darien-New Canaan bicycle route pilot program, that is being organized through the Active Living and Active Transportation Initiative led by the Department of Public Health and funded from the CDC. The project is focused on developing a 30-mile bike route connecting key destinations in each of our two towns, including schools, train stations, parks, trails, rail facilities, and recreational facilities. The consultant is currently reviewing the proposed route for feasibility focusing on rider's safety and comfort. An action plan will be developed by year-end, and WestCog will coordinate with Darien and New Canaan for review and implementation. This will be the point at which we will engage the volunteers that have stepped forward to help us with bike route planning. We have a number of people who are very interested, some really experienced bicyclists here in our town, we're very lucky. In addition to that, WestCog is working on a regional bike plan that will facilitate a connected bike network in our region focusing on north-south and east-west routes. The final plan will provide details on current bike route inventory, feedback from the public, and recommended strategies for building this regional network of bicycle routes. Last week was the first meeting of a newly organized task force that Governor Lamont put together. It's called the Task Force on Transit-Oriented Development. The task force is co-chaired by Jessica Casey, who's the Chief Economic and Community Development staffer for the City of Norwalk, and Robert Weiner, who's President of JDA Development Company. They met on October 3rd. The cities of Bridgeport, Danbury, Fairfield, Norwalk, Stamford, and Stratford, along with multiple state agencies and legislators, were invited to attend and participate. The focus of the TOD task force will be to identify untapped potential economic development in Fairfield County. According to someone in attendance, the governor would like to develop a regional vision for transit-oriented development and affordable housing, including the development of state-owned property currently used for rail station parking. You might recall that we don't have a current lease for our rail station parking, and so it is subject to some discussion right now as to how to use our commuter parking lots. Darien was held up as a town that needs to do the right thing. Increased housing density is a central theme in this plan. It's very unfortunate that I was not there for this meeting, not invited to participate. What I believe, my job now is to invite the task force chairs to come to Darien, to educate them on the three transit-oriented development projects that are underway, to share with them the information about the planning of the redevelopment of the Nuroton Heights train station, just so they can be fully informed as they move forward with the work of the task force. And last week, I received a communication from the State Department of Health offering us $15,000 in federal emergency preparedness funding to join an existing health district or create a new one with our neighboring towns. This is not a new concept, but we will have to discuss this in the future to see where Darien wishes to go in that regard. Kate?
We opened the bids for the parking lots at Highland Farms last week. They look pretty good. I will be speaking with the account load bidder, hopes of tomorrow, to iron a couple things out, and hopefully we'll be getting the project underway very soon.
That's it, perfect. One more amendment, something else that I handed out to the Board of Selectmen this evening, hot off the press from the Parks and Rep Department, are the FAQs regarding the Pear Tree Beach Building Project, which, is it online already, Pam? Perfect, thank you. All right. Moving along to new business, may I have a motion, please, to amend our agenda to take Item 6B ahead of Item 6A? May I have a second? Second by Pam, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, so new business, 6B, discuss and take action to accept donations for the Weed Beach Meadows Project. I know we have some folks here that need to move on to a different meeting.
Okay, so this is, Parktarmac representatives have been here in the past to discuss this. This is the proposed gift from the Darien Athletic Foundation and the Darien Foundation to construct the Weed Beach Meadows and walking trail at the Weed Beach property, including the short lane additions to the property. Right now, the high-end estimates for the cost of construction in total are the value of the gift would be one and a half million. My understanding is that they don't anticipate it ending up there, but in order to get this moving along and get it before the RTM, which would have to accept the gift, we're coming in with a, basically a not-to-exceed number. And any further details? We have Parktarmac Director and the Chairman of the Parktarmac Commission here today.
Yes, first, before we entertain questions, I know that we have representatives here from the Darien Foundation. Is anyone here from the Darien Athletic Foundation? Awesome. We want to thank you so very much for this contemplation of very generous gift to the Town of Darien. You all continue to be excellent partners with the town and we're so very grateful. Do we have additional questions from the Board of Selectmen on this gift?
Just one.
Yes.
I think we heard a rough estimate before, and it was substantially less than this. And I'm wondering if the plan has changed particularly, or it's just an updated estimate?
Yes, can someone speak to the cost estimate, maybe? Sure, thanks Pam.
Good question. So when Lori and I went to present at Darien Foundation and the Darien Athletic Foundation, we did, the estimate at that time was one million through Weston and Sampson. And then when we went to present, we talked about that one piece, but I think it was a feeling that we wanted to not do the project in two phases. We wanted to do the project as one whole, because the plan that I had originally had it designed for was just strictly for that piece that they're calling the Meadows now, which is the short lane piece. And then we added the rest of the property into the project to make a .91 mile loop, which brought the costs up, but that was prior to negotiating with the contractor that Darien Athletic Foundation uses. So we most likely will get that down.
I just have one question. You may have covered this and I just don't remember. So once this phenomenal project is done, and thank you very much to everyone for the great contribution, will this just become part of your operating budget to maintain it and, so the gift is really to build it?
Yes.
And then it will be up to the town to maintain it?
Exactly correct.
Any other questions? No? Okay. May I have a motion to waive the reading of the resolution in the interest of time?
Move.
You have a second?
Second.
Susan, seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the acceptance of a gift to the Town of Darien for the construction of Weed Beach Meadows and Trail from the Darien Athletic Foundation and the Darien Foundation, and we will be referring this to the representative town meeting for their consideration and approval. You have a motion? Moved by Pam. You have a second? Seconded by Mark. All those in favor? Wonderful, thank you very much, very, very exciting. We really appreciate your thoughtful contributions. Okay, we'll go back up to Item 6A, discuss and take action to request a, to waive the first right of refusal on a ground lease. And this waiving of the right of first refusal relates to the regulations that we have in place regarding the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club. We have a right of first refusal on the properties owned and operated by the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club. Currently, the Tokonik Club leases land for paddle courts from the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club. And there's a desire on the place of the Riding and Racket Club to renew the lease and build in some lease extensions for the property that the paddle courts are on, and to contemplate within that, the parameter of the leased area, a potential for the building of a paddle-warming hut. So because we have the right of first refusal, the Board of Selectmen has to contemplate whether we want to step in and exercise our right to purchase that parcel of land, or whether we waive our right and let the new lease move forward. So I guess we will open it up to board questions. We have information in our packets, which is part of the public record that shows a map. I don't know for those folks that are watching from home if they're familiar with where the paddle courts are. There's no change in the leased area that the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club and the Tokonik Club are contemplating. So I'd like to open it up for board questions and support for waiving our right of first refusal.
I'm in support of waiving our right of first refusal. I feel the Tokonik Club has explored multiple options to relocate these paddle courts and unsuccessfully so, and I think if the riding club could use the income, which it sounds like they could, to maintain the lease would make sense. I like the fact that, you know, it's a 25-year lease, we'll have an opportunity again to revisit it, depending on, you know, if the club still exists, how we're doing with Highland Farms, you know, the potential to expand, but I think it's too soon to take on more land in that area.
Just to clarify, it's an initial lease term of 25 years with three five-year extension options. Anybody else?
I'm in full support also. I think it's a win for not only the Riding and Racket Club, but also for the Tokonik Club, because they had no place to put their courts if they couldn't have them there. So I see no reason why the town would ever want that parcel, in my mind, too separate from where Highland Farms is, and a small little area, so I think it's a win-win and I'm in full support of waiving our right.
Yep.
Should be noted that Tokonik's been using that property, renting their property since 1978.
Yeah.
And it's been continually used as a paddle facility. Four courts means 16 players maximum at any one time, plus some spectators, maybe people waiting in their cars. I think that they explored, that is, Tokonik explored many different options and could find none that made sense economically, or could they actually fit it in someplace. This is a good resolution, especially once the club was able to work out there's only requirements, a number of members could be involved. So I recommend that we waive our right of first refusal. We have a bite at the apple later on at some point. We won't be here, but somebody else will, if things change. And certainly if times change, it could have an earlier bite than not.
Sure.
I also think that, I mean to say that as part of this deal, I know that Tokonik is going to be spending money to upgrade the courts, put in lighting that is more direct, much like the football field where it's direct lighting rather than having ambient lighting. And I think that if they ever get to the point where they're thinking about a paddle hut, it would be where the corn crib is now, so it's not a new building, and it would be relatively modest, I think.
Right. So in the interest of reaffirming that our responsibility as a Board of Selectmen is to look out for the interests of the town and to determine whether this piece of land would be, would give us any kind of an advantage, would it be a benefit to the town for us to pursue ownership of this piece of land? We have our personal feelings about being supportive of the Tokonik Club and the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club. They are private clubs, though, and our interest is to look out for the taxpayers in the town. So in, just in looking at the map itself and where these courts are, you know, we'd be buying sort of the middle of the donut, which doesn't make any sense, there's really no advantage to the town, there's no egress for the town were we to purchase this piece of land, so without seeing a strong case for public interest, I too support waiving our right of first refusal on this. Mark, any comments?
No. I was going to say something like what you just said better, so.
All right. Great. Then, this one isn't too long, so I will read this resolution. Resolution by the Board of Selectmen, the Town of Darien waiving its right of first refusal with respect to a lease proposed by the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club Incorporated to the Tokonik Paddle Club LLC. Whereas a declaration of open space deed restriction and right of first refusal was entered into between the Ox Ridge Hunt Club and the Town of Darien by document dated April 22nd, 2012, and recorded on the land records in volume 1458, page 462, this declaration was amended by a document dated April 10th, 2017. A request has been made by the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club, Inc., the successor in interest to the Ox Ridge Hunt Club, to enter into a renewed and amended lease with the Tokonik Paddle Club. This declaration provided to the Town of Darien the right of first refusal, not only with respect to a sale, but with respect to a ground lease or other similar conveyance of an interest of property in question. The town has reviewed the location of said lease and the terms thereof, as more particularly set forth in the letter dated September 25th, 2019, and attached. Now therefore be it resolved that for this particular lease, the town hereby waives its right of first refusal, and the owner is free of any right of first refusal with respect to this particular sale lease. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Susan, may I have a second? Mark? All those in favor? Great. Okay, thank you. All right. Discuss and take action on a request for a bid waiver from the Nuroton Fire Department. So the Westerbeak motor, which is the motor that runs the fire pump, not the boat, has failed, and the fire department determined that it was more effective to replace it rather than repair it. There is only one distributor for these types of motors in the region, so bidding would not be terribly effective, so they've asked us to waive the competitive bidding process. There's also an item further on the agenda to transfer funds to allow for the actual cost of the replacement. And we have some members of the department here. Perfect. Okay, so I had some questions that Kate was able to follow up on for us about the utilization of the fireboat. And so if I can articulate these just for public interest, and gentlemen, if there's anything that you disagree with in this information, please let us know. I think there were a total of 51 calls between 2015 and 2019. One of those was for a fire, but there is a protocol and a policy in place that whenever the Darien police boat is dispatched, the fireboat is also dispatched, and they assist in any water rescue efforts. Is that correct? Is that, you can come up and talk to us.
For those that don't know me, I'm Brendan Keenham, the First Assistant Chief at Nuroton. To answer your, to clarify, yes, we do work together with the Darien Police Department. We do have a marine response agreement with the Police Department that we agree upon every year, get together and meet upon. We are actually the primary asset on any search and rescue operation on the water.
So what does that mean, what does that mean exactly?
So if there's any kind of search and rescue operation, i.e. overdue boat, someone in the water, any kind of boat collision, we are actually dispatched as the primary asset. The police are out there and they'll always be there to assist us as well.
Unless it's police, no? Yeah, we're going to need to get some clarification. Maybe we could see your marine response agreement?
Sure.
Because we had conflicting information from the Police Department.
We actually have a, Chief Donnie Anderson emailed us last week. We're actually getting together in the next couple of weeks to review that, so when we're done, we'll be happy to share that with you.
Okay. I think we, it can be said that you are collaborative, you work together?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so the, you need the pump functional?
Yes.
In case there's a fire that you need to respond to on the water?
Yes.
But it sounds like your primary function is to do marine rescues.
The majority of our calls are definitely search and rescue operations.
Yep.
We do need the pump, not only for boat fires, but it is a primary asset for shoreline fires, i.e. you have Nuroton Bay, doesn't have great water supply issues there, so if we had a large fire, we could supply water to the land-based apparatus with the pump. We had a fire on Shipway Road a few years ago where we actually brought 34 over and had line laid in case we needed it. It's also, you've got some major potential issues in town with things like the Darien Boat Club, where if there were a fire on the Darien Boat Club docks, 34 is the primary asset to get water on the fire there. It's not realistic to expect stretch 800, 900 feet of hose at a timely fashion.
That's very helpful, thank you Brendan.
Yes. When was the, how long is the pump in out of operation?
It's been out of operation for about six weeks now.
Okay.
We started to have some issues with it earlier on the year. We nursed it through the summer, trying to cover the boating season, and within the last six weeks, it just had a total failure. We sent it out to Norwalk Cove where we have most of our maintenance done. They took a look at it, they said there's major issues. They sent it out to Hanson Marine, who's the distributor in the area, and they gave us our two options.
Okay.
Brendan, can you remind me, does the boat stay in the water all year long?
Yes, and that's one of the primary reasons that we have ongoing maintenance with the boat, and that is because it is in the water 24/7, 365. We pull it once in the, once in the spring usually for a quick maintenance, at most two days, and it's back in the water.
So it's saltwater cove?
It is, and that's one of the major issues.
Is the issue many hours on the motor, or is it more?
It's more of the corrosion from the salt. I mean, we're.
Understand.
The boat is not the motor. The pumps are third. So wait, how old is the actual motor? The pumps are third?
The Westerbeak itself is about 10 years old. I mean, we've done some work on it, but hopefully it'll evolve.
Any other questions for Brendan? No? Okay, thank you, appreciate you coming here to clarify. There are no other questions. The resolution regarding waiving the requirement for competitive bidding for the repair of the Westerbeak motor on Marine Unit 34, whereas the Westerbeak motor on the fire pump on Marine Unit 34 is no longer operational and must be replaced, and the fire pump is essential to water-based firefighting operations. And there is only one distributor for Westerbeak motors in the region. Now therefore be it resolved that the requirements for competitive bidding for the replacement of the Westerbeak motor is waived. May I have a motion to approve this motion? Mark?
I know I'm elected at large, but these guys are my neighbors, you know.
Ma'am, second.
Second, okay.
Pam, okay. All those in favor? Great, thank you. Okay. Okay. In the interest of letting the gentlemen move on to other things, may I entertain a motion to amend the agenda to take the transfer item, item 7A, next. You have a motion? Pam moves. Kip seconds. All those in favor? Great. So.
So, I apologize for the typo on the, on the agenda. The transfer is for $18,000. The form was correct. I think you all know what it's all about now.
Yep. So, this is a, a transfer request to move $18,000 from contingency to the Marine Repair and Maintenance Account. Any questions on the transfer? May I have a, a motion to approve the transfer? Susan moves. Mark second. Okay. Susan moves. Mark seconds. All those in favor? Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, gentlemen. Okay. Item 6D, and we haven't talked about this for quite some time, and this is a conversation starter. Discuss potential uses for the Edgerton property. You know, we've had the property that is at Edgerton, the former site of the Senior Center. We have some neighbors who are here this evening. Thank you very much for coming. It's really laid fallow since we knocked down the Senior Center after the opening of the Mather Center. It's been used for some laydown for some equipment from time to time. We had, in the past, reached out to the Board of Education to see if they had interest in discussing with us the utilization of, of the property, not under the current superintendent, of course, but previously there was no interest expressed on the part of the Board of Education. So, it's probably time for us to begin a conversation with exactly what we would like to see, how we would like the town to utilize this piece of land. There have been a number of things recommended over time on this piece of property, most notably, and before my term began, the Pooltime Committee looked at putting a public swimming pool on this parcel of land. There's been discussions of senior affordable housing development on this parcel of land. And I have, in the past, talked with neighbors about some other ideas, and I will just, in the interest of throwing some ideas out on the table and then hearing from the board, we could do a number of things. The town's in control of this piece of land. We could dedicate it as parkland if we wanted to, and then it would be in the care and control of the Parks Commission. There are positives and negatives with that. I think you understand that the negative of that is the town doesn't retain a supply of available land if we have to replace parkland somewhere. So, it's always good for us to have some town-controlled land. We have an unmet need for additional housing for the developmentally disabled. The cottage, I believe, has been a great success for our community. David Genovese is planning to build 12 units of housing for the developmentally disabled as his contribution to the inclusionary zoning mandate with the Bay Water Properties commercial redevelopment. And there's an unmet need that I see within our community, and that is for a childcare center for working parents. And so, you know, with, with that sort of umbrella about, you know, lots of different things, and I'm sure you all have other ideas on things that we could do with that property. And we could do nothing with that property. We could leave it as is. We could regrade it, plant grass, have it be beautiful open space. The Noroten Heights area is gonna change a lot in the next couple of years, and to keep some open space might be a good advantage in that area of town. So, with that backdrop, I'll open it to comments and questions from the board. Are you gonna start, Mark?
I've thought about this quite, quite a lot over the last few years. Very succinctly, if it will. You know, I, I really think that we ought to retain this property as developable for further needs. Now, that doesn't mean we couldn't have some softer uses. On one proposal was paddle courts or, or something like that, because they're pretty much removable, a- as opposed to some, you know, large permanent building. I know that the Board of Ed says they have no, no, no use for the space right now, but should we come to the situation where we need another educational facility of some other kind, we're gonna have to start buying $2 million houses and turn them down to make space for them. You know, I just, I just don't think that's, you know, something that's gonna be acceptable. So, some of your suggestions would then fit with my ideas and some wouldn't. But, you know, it's kinda hard to stand up to the, to the Board of Ed and the superintendent and say, I know you say you don't want it, but we think you're gonna want it, but that's what we have for you.
Okay.
As sort of, sort of a neighbor to that area, I'm on West Avenue, right at the juncture of Edgerton and West Avenue, and my kids are at, I have a child at Middlesex, and there's a lot of, all they do is cross the street and run over and play in the Middlesex area and that area there. And I would love to see some sort of, I don't know, I would love to see a skate park there. I'll just be straight up. And, because that's what they're doing there now. They've got the skateboards, they've got their bikes, and it's, it's, it's a little treacherous, and I'd love to see it a little more organized. I'd love to have a real space for these kids to do it that's not in the road, 'cause they're doing it, and there's a gaggle of kids that are doing it every day, all day long. So, yeah, I would love to see a skate park there, and that could eventually, if it had to go away for a building or something, it'd be very easy to be.
I seem to recall that there was debate over a skate park again before my time. Maybe Parks and Rec. Yeah. And I wasn't sure if it was on this parcel or if it was on other park properties, so we could, we could get some information about how well received that was. And I would be very remiss in not talking about municipal liability associated with this.
I get it, yeah. But, but it's happening anyways, is what I was saying. It's, it's all I can say, it's happening anyways. And that steep grade, and I'm sure as neighbors that are even closer, that you see the kids' mind going down on their skateboards, and, you know, it's, it, I would love to see it more organized. I think that there's a bigger liability to just let it run wild the way it's being.
Yeah.
It is. I'd love to see the kids more concentrated.
I should also say for.
And we can look at like Cove Island that has one, and Stanford's got them, and, you know, they've got them up at, up in Westport, too, at Compo that has skate parks.
I, I think it's good to remind us all that there was an agreement when Middlesex Middle School was renovated, that the bus path goes around the property that we're speaking about and into the, the back of Middlesex Middle School. And I don't believe that that's an agreement that in any way could change, so we have to be very mindful of the traffic patterns that exist today when we're contemplating something for the future.
But the, like, the Compo Beach one has, it's almost like a basketball court, you know, fencing around it, so the kids are enclosed.
Sure.
And off those, off those roads, and off the, the big hill for the bus.
Yeah. I will say that that has bubbled up as another need within the Parks and Rec Commission, are additional outdoor basketball courts. We have one that is offline at Cherry Lawn Park, so, you know, that's something that could still be done even though the land isn't dedicated to parkland.
There was one at Henley School. I don't know if it's still there.
Okay. Others?
It's not my turn to speak, but I just wanted to ask a question. You raise the possibility of childcare for working parents. Would this be anticipation of perhaps a statewide requirement for preschool or something like that?
I'm not thinking necessarily about public preschool more than what we have today through our ELP program.
Yes.
But I'm thinking about a, you know, a, a more commercial daycare center to accommodate parent, working parents, you know, that could be almost from birth to, you know, preschool There are a number of companies that are, do, are in that business very professionally. There's a new one that just opened up in Westport, and I know that they're looking to come to other towns, towns like ours. We do have to acknowledge that we have many more both parents working in our community now than we have in the past. So, wh- whether it's this, this place or not, I think it's an important consideration for the town in general going forward. Susan?
Yeah, I've given, I've given it a lot of thought, and I don't know if I'm happy or sad that I'm stepping off as far as this issue is concerned. I guess before I also view my opinion, I just, for anyone that's out there listening, I hope everyone will respect the fact that we are just having a discussion.
Yeah.
And whatever comes out of our mouth, whether it's a skate park or childcare, I would hate to have someone out there write a letter to the paper tomorrow and say, oh my gosh, look what's going at Edgerton. Because I've found over the years, with the fuss or anything, is we have to have these public conversations, and unfortunately, sometimes people grab on to a word or two words. So, that's kind of my public announcement.
Good to say.
Anyway. So, I actually agree with a lot that's been said. I would rather keep it as town-owned land than, than parkland, because I think once we dedicate parkland, we, we just have less options. And I think at this point, waiting to see what's gonna happen at the heights, respecting the neighbors, respecting what's there is important. You know, the two things that people always say to me, we have a shortage of our train station parking and moorings at, at, on the water. So, neither one of those two things could ever be at this property, obviously. So, we can take those off the list.
I, it would, I don't want to interrupt you, but we could have parking there.
We could. It's just a long walk to the train station.
Not really. Not really. I don't think it would be, I shouldn't say, shouldn't say it wouldn't be a preferred use, but it's certainly.
True.
It's something that we have talked about internally when parking is taken offline. We know that there's gonna be, we've discussed it here, right, in our parking, what's gonna happen when the, huh, the squatters.
This is not a nice word. I was gonna say, thank you for saying it. When the people who are using Stop &amp; Shop and Walgreens and Palmer's parking lots can't park there anymore, we're gonna have a, a parking problem, and Mark's been vocal about that. So, because we do have a new superintendent, I know we've asked the Board of Education. I don't think it would hurt to put a finite time to say unto the Board of Education, because there's been a change in administration, can you once again put in writing that you, you do not see the need to have this property? Just so that way, we've covered all of our bases. But I wouldn't let them go on for a year or two, I would say. Please let us know within the next three months or whatever, whatever it be, so that way it's, it's closed once more. I actually served on the committee for affordable senior housing there, and I thought it would have been a very good use of the land. I know there were some logistical problems with some easements on the far side of the, of the land. So, I certainly think that that could be a, a strong possibility. It's a low use, in my mind, and I think it's something that's very needed. And I also totally agree with some kind of childcare, if it was a public-private partnership kind of thing, that, I do hear that from a lot of working parents, that there is a big problem with dual working parents, you know, as far as childcare is concerned. So, that's something to certainly look into. I, I do think that the town has a lot that we've offered to the youth as far as amenities are concerned, so my initial thought would be to either use it for senior housing. I, I think the cottage is a great thing. I think it's, it's tough to build another cottage that would then be used for Darien citizens, which I think would be important in that land. But that's something that would be, so I guess my three top things would be similar to the cottage, some affordable senior housing, and then the last thing would be some type of, of daycare, as long as it's not huge. I think we have to respect the size of the land and the traffic that may or may not happen. What are your thoughts?
Thank you. Kip?
I haven't thought about it.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't know this was even gonna be on the agenda until I saw it, and I haven't thought about the property in two years. So, I mean, I, but I think you gotta put some real thought process behind this before you leap out and do anything. The first thing that I think about is, if Noroten Heights is gonna change, come through all these developments, maybe you wanna see what happens to that change before you make any kind of firm decision, long-term use. Because it could be markedly different after, after the development occurs, and, and traffic patterns, and people's living patterns, and who knows? I mean, this is a, we have some big changes going on in town, and trying to figure out what this property might be best used for, might be best found out a couple of years from now.
Sure. And, and there could be a way to, I'm gonna use this word, it's not the right word, to, to better activate the property while we're waiting.
Yes.
For example, you know, if we did some, some regrading and seeding, and it was a place where people could just go passively enjoy in a way that really isn't possible today, so.
Do the buses all go through there?
They do. Yeah.
That's sort of interesting.
Yeah. So, I appreciate the board's input, but I really wanna hear from the neighbors. So, thank you for coming, and although it's not public comment, I welcome you to come and tell us your thoughts. You're the neighbors. You know what might work, what doesn't work, so please, the podium is yours.
I live at 22 Edgerton, and really, everything you said is, has, has some validity. One thing I might add is, you do, you do have to really be, excuse me, really be conscious of the traffic there, because, you know, to talk about daycare for a minute, you know, you'd have parents dropping their children off in the morning, the same time buses are going up through. So, that would be something that would have to be worked out. But I like the idea of keeping, keeping the land kind of in, in hold, in check for what may be needed down the road, and, and you said you're gonna talk to the Board of Ed about that. So, my wife has thrown out the idea of a, some type of a dog run, you know, where you'd fence in, fence it in, and there is parking there, and that would be used only during daylight hours. And maybe you wouldn't have it start so early in the morning after the bus is up. That could be something to be entertained.
It is an unmet need. People keep asking for a dog park.
That's a great suggestion.
Yep.
If you use the word park, you just have to be careful.
Are the fields part of this property?
No.
No.
Okay.
But those are, those are some of my thoughts. But I, I like the idea we're getting started with this.
Thank you. Appreciate that you're here. Laura, do you have any comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Laura Mosher. I live at 16 Edgerton Street. I've lived there for 22 years, and in that time, every single one of your suggestions has been looked at. So, there are pluses and minuses to every single one of these options. I have to say that the cottage has been a terrific neighbor. Jamie, we've, we've talked about that in the past, so that I could see where you'd be fulfilling a need with that. We love the dog park idea. But I do agree that Noroten Heights is going to be changed significantly, and we don't know what that looks like yet, and we don't know how we're gonna be impacted, and we don't know how our schools are gonna be impacted. We always think they're not going to be, but we are always surprised in the end. And I do think that we need to consider Middlesex Middle School, and if that does, their population expands, they might need that property. I know they think they don't, but they, they honestly might need it. So, I think taking our time is prudent. It's a smart move, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your input. Any further thoughts? Part of the first discussion on this topic. I look forward to talking about it more. Kip, I look forward to hearing your thoughts. You know, when you've had a chance to think of it. You know, when you've had a chance to think about it a little bit more. Okay. Nothing further, then we'll move on to 6E, which is a discuss results of a study of 35 Leroy basement.
Do you want to break the public hearing on the parking regulations? I don't think there's anybody here for it, but it was scheduled for 8:00 P.M.
Should we recess this evening?
You don't have to recess, it's one of your agenda items. But if you just want to open it up to see if anybody's going to comment on it, then you can go back to your.
Sure, okay. So may I have a motion to, again, amend the agenda to take item number 10 out of order?
Stumble.
Mark moves, Susan seconds, all those in favor? Great. Okay, so we're now going to open up a public hearing on the proposed changes to the parking regulations.
This is the increase to the fee for the merchant parking from $85 a year to $100 a year.
Does it also include that change in the lot?
Nope, that did not need any public hearing.
Okay.
We're required to have a lot of public comment on this.
Okay, is there any public comment? Anyone that wishes to comment on the change of the merchant parking? Thank you for coming. Merchant parking permit fee from $85 to $100. Seeing no public comment, then I will move to close the public hearing. And may I have a second? Susan seconds, all those in favor? Okay, great. All right, now, back to the regular programming. Discuss the results of the study of the 35 Leroy basement. So just as a backdrop, it's been a really long time since we've talked about the basement of 35 Leroy. But I'm sure that you all remember that it was part of the highly controversial Mather Center development that while we agreed to give space to the Board of Education because we had to relocate them out of this building into 35 Leroy, the RTM was very specific that we were to only give them the same square feet that they had in this building then in 35 Leroy. Which left the basement of 35 Leroy still in the care and control of the Town of Darien for contemplation of some future use. So we've talked about it a lot over the years. And Kate's had some great ideas, there's things that we could do, but now that we've.
And they've all been chopped down.
Now that we've put some money behind actually studying the issue, I will turn it to Kate to talk about the outcome.
So the main idea was, could we move any town offices there? And really, the only office in this building that doesn't really need to be here for administrative control or anything would be the probate office. So we hired Silver Petrocelli to do a feasibility study to see if we could do that, if we could move probate over there. And I will say to their credit, they got not all the way through the study. And it became obvious that it wasn't going to be feasible. And they said, you know, before we keep going further and keep spending your money, you know, here's what we had found. So they met with me and Ed to review the findings. And, you know, we'd been through the space with them. Basically, because of building regulations, ADA requirements, code requirements, fire requirements, it is not feasible to move the probate court over there. It would be rather expensive. Is it technically possible? Maybe, there's not really enough space for all of their needs. But the cost of the renovations would be rather high. We'd have to move the fire suppression system up. We'd have to create a new means of egress, or at least improve the means of egress service now. Locating the bathrooms that they would need to be ADA compliant would be difficult.
Well, they needed two means of egress.
They need two means of egress because of the number of people that they sometimes have for hearings, yeah. So they would need two means of egress. We could potentially locate a smaller department there. If it was a small number of employees, you wouldn't need the two means of egress. But you still have the problems with the ceilings. You'd have, it's not desirable space because it's below grade. So you don't have a lot of natural light moving into it. And so there still would be a lot of work to be done to make it ADA accessible, so. Where I'm coming down on it right now is the best use of it is storage.
Kate, is there anything at all in there now in the basement?
The Board of Ed has been using it as storage.
Why not turn it over to the Board of Ed and get rid of our expense of maintaining it?
Well, I wouldn't say we have, do we have much expense of maintaining it?
Does the Board of Ed have any, I don't know if you know the answer, are they using any portables or anything for storage somewhere?
I don't know that. And one thing that had occurred to me is we could move some things that we have stored here over to there and free up space in the basement here at Town Hall. You know, we probably, we would need to do some work fixing some of the doors and cleaning up the space.
I could, yeah, I could think of several things that, you know, that we store here in this building that we might consume.
Yep.
Yeah, we have some, we have some space downstairs. The old B3 room is now storage. The old liberation options program, those two offices are now being used as storage. So potentially, we could move what's stored in there over to 35 Leroy and open those spaces back up for use in Town Hall.
I spoke with Ed earlier today. We do store things for the garden club, things were in this building previously for their flower shows that we've now moved to 701 Post Road in the basement because they only need to be accessed infrequently. We keep the wreaths of the Beautification Commission that go on the light poles here in this building. We store things for the Health Department, and there's a light tower for our emergency preparedness people. We store things for several sports groups in the shed-style garages by the loading dock. And as Kate said, we, you know, we're always looking for storage needs here. But in my mind, I say to myself, you know, it's a little awkward, it's a building that's predominantly occupied by the Board of Ed. You know, they've done some things, they have a new print shop that I think operates behind their meeting room. And I'd like to maybe, maybe with the board's agreement, set up a meeting with Dr. Adley to talk about the needs and the possibilities. I don't know if there's something related to shared services that we might be able to agree to that could be housed in the basement. And I don't really know what I'm saying, whether it's, you know, move the print shop downstairs and we handle all of our printing needs in terms of budget and letterhead and envelopes and those sorts of things. I don't know if the IT needs different kind of space, but that's clearly a shared service. So I think it's worthwhile.
Sure, I mean, it's warm and dry down there. We've talked about all of its deficiencies, but it is space and it is, you know, warm and dry and.
Yep.
And easily accessible, even though it's got one egress.
Right.
Right, and if you're not going to have a lot of meetings.
It's very easily accessible to them.
Right.
Yes.
I think it's definitely worth pursuing a conversation for some, any kind of consolidated services that we might be able to do.
It's a great idea. That'd be the primary purpose of the discussion, it would seem to me.
Okay. I want to be respectful of the RTM's wishes, but, you know, we have to deal with certain realities. Any other thoughts on the issue?
Would it have to go through the RTM if we decided to do a share?
I think if we were sharing the space now.
Yeah.
Because we would be retaining control.
We would still have control.
Yep. Okay, if there's no other comments on that item, then we'll move on to 6F, which is discuss and take action to approve the increase to the bonding authorization for the generator.
He's been waiting patiently, so I'll just let him have it.
Yep. Go for it.
I mean, like, approve it slightly.
The cost estimate for the, or the bids came in for the generator, they were slightly higher than what we had projected. So we're requesting a disbanding so that we can get this building on a generator.
Yes.
That will generate, you know, cover the whole building including the Mather Center.
I was trying to think of when we started this discussion. I think it was prior to me coming on the board, if not.
We've been discussing the generator in this building for years. So I think gave us full support of this because I'm going to say that now they serve, we got the generator done.
And I'll chime in here. I believe strongly that we have to approve this expenditure and get a generator that can serve this building. I have lived here long enough through storms and whatnot where we don't have access to phones, we don't have access to computers. We're not able to utilize the Mather Center as the emergency shelter that we had hoped. And this will solve all of those problems. So I think it's a critical, literally and figuratively, a critical infrastructure improvement to this building.
Just so you know, one of the things that happens is only certain offices have power on the current generator. So, you know, we do still have to do things like get a pedal out.
Yes, sure.
And so what we've done in the last two hurricanes is go down to the, what used to be the training room, which no longer exists down by the Fire Marshal because they had power and we could run the payroll from there. But then they had to run an extension cord from the Town Administrator's Office into the Finance Department, wheel the printer partway out so it would all reach to print the checks.
Yeah.
So.
We're doing electronic transfers anyway. Anyway, we have to do this, but just a couple of questions.
Yep.
Why diesel versus natural gas if you have natural gas here?
We looked at the cost differential.
The capital cost, but what about the operating cost?
It's, the diesel will only be used when you run it. And we'll run it for 30 minutes once a week.
Right.
Just to test it, just to keep it up to speed.
Okay.
But the cost for natural gas, once you get above about 250 KW, was exponential. We were looking hard at gas. We were going to do a lot of the piping ourselves, anything to save money. But the unit itself was almost double.
Double, okay.
So the ROI is too long.
Yes, it's way too, way too. For a unit that is going to sit and be used during emergencies, the diesel use just doesn't.
It's nominal, I know, I got that. And the other question was with regard to the additional electrical upgrade. How much funding is EverSource, how much is that cost and how much is EverSource giving us money?
I'll take you through the story really quick. Originally, when we met out here, a lot of the cost to do what we wanted to do with EverSource was costly. Let's say it was in the five figures, it was around 20, 25,000. By the time we finished meeting, it was down around 10. We just had a kickoff meeting with EverSource and our contractor that we're going to hire. I was able to talk them through a lot of what they want to do here as needs for EverSource, maybe not needs for the town. And I just got, had a conversation last week with EverSource, and they are going to eliminate all the costs entirely. So we're down to zero right now.
Good answer.
Oh, okay. My due diligence is over.
That's what I do.
Okay, Ed. I've got another project for you.
It was a kind conversation.
It was a kind. Okay.
Okay. Any further questions?
No.
So we're really asking for an additional sum in bonding authorization for an additional $75,000.
Yes.
For a total of a $325,000 appropriation, correct? So I'm not going to read this resolution. So may I entertain a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
Please.
Kip moves, seconded by Mark, all those in favor? Great. So this is a resolution to amend the resolution adopted on June 12, 2017, authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of $250,000 to finance the cost of the Town Hall generator project to increase the appropriation and bond authorization by $75,000 to $325,000. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Kip moves, Pam seconds, all those in favor? Great. And I strongly encourage the representative town meeting to approve this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed, thanks for your patience. Okay, we've done the fire boat. We have appointments. We have two appointments. First, the appointment of Juliet Hayne to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring on November 30, 2022. I have a motion to approve Juliet's appointment. Pam moves. I have a second, Kip seconds, all those in favor? Great. And then we have an appointment of Lucia Zikowski to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring on November 30, 2019. And as a result of that short timeframe, a subsequent term which would expire on November 30, 2022. I have a motion to approve Lucia. Mark moves, may I have a second? Kip seconds, all those in favor? Great, thank you. All right, we have meeting minutes of our regular meeting on September 23.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Did we do a transfer?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, that's for the motor. Excuse me, of course we do, all right, excuse me.
We did that.
Any corrections or additions to the September 23 meeting minutes?
No.
Great. May I have a motion to approve as written? Susan moves, may I have a second? Pam seconds, all those in favor? Four and one extension, that wasn't here.
Yep.
Special meeting minutes of September 23.
The only question I have, I don't think you came to the special.
Oh, you know what, you didn't.
I missed it.
Yeah, okay. All right, so may I have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of September 23? Pam moves, may I have a second?
Sure.
Mark seconds, all those in favor? Three in favor and two extensions. Okay. Agenda review. We're getting closer to the Noroten Heights update. We actually have an important meeting tomorrow on that, so I think after that we should be prepared to.
Ed wanted to wait for that before updating.
Yep.
In regards to the station?
Yes.
Okay.
Feasibility study, you know, after input is given, it's complete.
We can do it, the next one is the date I'm reading, so I don't know how that works. You can do those first, get this.
Oh, we can start earlier.
The department heads. Well, if you all don't ask the department heads a lot of questions, we can through those reports and.
But could we meet, could our meeting be first?
Your meeting is first. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Isn't it usually after?
Could we do your business first? I don't.
That's what I think is my question.
What time would we start? Well, the meeting starts at 8:45, that's what it's scheduled for. It's just posted as Board of Select and Joint Department Heads, so we could start.
If we started at eight?
That's a special meeting.
Okay.
And that's up to you. Is that the last meeting?
Yes.
That's your last.
The Joint Department Heads?
Yeah.
Well, maybe I would like to entertain potentially a special meeting to receive a feasibility study on the Noroten Heights train station. Because I really feel that, you know, those of you that are coming off the board deserve to have the update.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, could we move that meeting into an evening meeting and still meet the?
That's potential, right, Kate?
The department head would still stay on the.
Stay on that and have a special meeting in the evening, that we don't have to.
Yep, yep.
That would be.
So the RTM meets on the 21st. So we would probably, we could either do the 28th or we could do November 4th. Because we're still.
Yeah, yep. Is there a preference?
Say it again, November 4th?
Or the 28th, Monday 28th.
You can pick any date.
You could actually do any day. Doesn't have to be a Monday.
Right.
I'm out of town, the 29th through the 31st.
Okay.
So the 28th would work?
28th, looks like it might work for you.
It's Tuesday through Thursday, right?
28th is a Monday.
28th is a Monday.
Yep. Mark, would that work for you to not meet as a Board of Selectmen the morning of the Joint Department Heads, only have Joint Department Heads and then have the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, the 28th? meeting on Monday, the 28th?
It would be fine.
Okay.
So the 22nd's the Joint Department Heads?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Have it at the right time, but saying wrong.
So that sounds good to everybody. Can, can I, I guess I'll entertain a motion to amend the Board of Selectmen meeting schedule to move the meeting scheduled for the morning of October 22 to evening meeting on October 28 at the normal time of 7:00 P.M.
Great.
For the, and, you know, we'll put on that agenda item and update from Ed Gentile on the Norotin Heights feasibility study.
Yes.
Okay.